Isn't like, you know, a nor'easter. You have no idea.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're streaming live now.
Just wait one second, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this Commissioners' meeting to order. If everyone please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. As everyone prepares for the snowstorm, entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? I'm
Aye.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Ms. Hart?
I received two emails, but neither of them are about the agenda today.
Okay, we'll move on to resolution 200255.
Proving the current payables, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund. Numbers 313734-314661 inclusive totaling $2,864,656.08. Electronic funds transferred, including all payroll accounts totaling $8,952,382.99. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? I'm Okay, resolution 200245.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy public officials bonding requirements. Whereas on November 23, 2011, Act 106 became effective immediately authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers of the county have separate bonds. Whereas pursuant to subsection 1130A of the Act, which requires the County Board of Commissioners as the governing body of County of Lackawanna, PA to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and required amount of required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risks of loss and compliance with a subsection of the Act. Whereas subsection 1130B of the Act permits the County Board of Commissioners to instruct their county risk manager to compile and submit information relevant to the determination of an amount required security under subsection A. Whereas subsection, I'm sorry, whereas section 1129 of the Act requires that the form of blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the governing body of the county and after review by the county solicitor in solicitation with the county risk manager. Be it resolved that the county shall hereby adopt the following procedures for compliance with the provisions of the Pennsylvania Act 106. Number one, the county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of every calendar year as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and to provide information as set forth below to enable the Board of Commissioners to place into force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the Act for the succeeding year. In the course of performing the duties assigned under the one above, the county risks manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number three, the county risk manager shall obtain competitive proposals for the county's designated broker of record, from the county's designated broker of record, for the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number four, upon receipt and review of the competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record and at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the county risk manager shall present the Board of Commissioners for its consideration and approval. The form and amount of required security, together with a recommendation as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements set forth in the Act. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman here to speak on that is our county risk manager, Mr. Rick Jones.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning, Rick.
Your consideration today is resolution 20-245, authorizing the county to obtain a blanket bond to satisfy the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's public officials bonding requirements in order to remain in compliance with Act 106 of 2011. Act 106 allows counties in Pennsylvania to purchase blanket public officials bond and crime insurance with a faithful performance of duties endorsement to provide coverage for the county's elected and appointed public officials. The lone exception in Act 106 is the county treasurer, who by state statute must obtain and post evidence of a separate public officials bond to the Commonwealth. Prior to Act 106 taking effect in November of 2011, Lackawanna County had a blanket employee dishonesty bond and crime insurance policy with a $1 million limit. But that policy excluded county public officials who were required to secure and post individual public official bonds with minimal limits. For example, back then, the state only required county commissioners to post a bond of $7,500. As required by Act 106 and in consultation with the county solicitor, Lackawanna County has annually obtained and posted a $2 million blanket crime and public officials bond, including faithful performance of duties endorsement, beginning effective January 1, 2012, and annually thereafter. As the county's risk manager and working with our broker of record and the county solicitor, we recommend that the county renew its current $2 million blanket crime and public officials bond, which includes the faithful performance of duties endorsement effective January 1, 2021. The annual premium of $7,275 breaks down to approximately $6 per bonded county employee and public official. And the blanket bond also covers by endorsement five other county boards plus one county authority. The county pension board, the county salary board, the county election board, the county prison board, the county fair authority, and the county fair board. Today, with your approval of resolution 20-245, Lackawanna County will remain in compliance with Act 106. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones?
No, I don't.
No? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mr. Jones.
Thank you Commissioners.
Take care.
Thanks, Rick.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, stay safe with the snow. Resolution 200246.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding the eligibility under LERTA for property tax exemption for a certain deterioration property located in Elephant Borough. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 66 of 1977, known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LERTA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas, in accordance with the procedure set forth in the LERTA statute, the Borough Council, the Borough Council of the Borough of Elephant, Lackawanna County, has held hearings to define the boundaries of the deteriorated areas within the borough. And whereas, set forth in Elephant Borough Ordinance Number 62020 enacted on November 24, 2020, the borough has approximately 112.267 acres of unimproved land as more specifically identified in Exhibit A as a deteriorated property and is entitled to 10 years of exemption for municipal real estate property taxes under LERTA following an exemption schedule that was duly adopted as part of the ordinance. And whereas, a meeting was held on December 2, 2020, the Board of Directors of the Mid Valley School District adopted resolution number 62020, providing that the same approximately 112.267 acres of unimproved land as more specifically identified in Exhibit A shall be exempt under LERTA. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, acting pursuant to LERTA, likewise desire to provide the properties described here in Exhibit A with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LERTA. Now therefore be it resolved that for 10 years, beginning on the first day of the full, first full tax year following the issuance of the new assessment in connection with the completion of the improvements, and such tax exemption shall continue for a term of 10 years. From the date there, they'll be exempt from real property taxes that would otherwise be owed Lackawanna County as a result of the increase in assessment attributed to the cost of such improvements constructed on a for said property. The schedule of real estate taxes to be exempted shall be in accordance with the below portion of improvements each year linked in percentage. Year one, 95% tax exemption. Year two, 90% tax exemption. Year three is 85%. Year four, 80%. Year five is 75%. Year six is 70%. Year seven is 65%. Year eight is 60%. Year nine is 55%. And year 10 is 50%. Upon completion of the 10-year exemption scheduled term set forth, the exemption from taxes shall end, and the entire property, land, and building shall be fully subject to be, will be, shall be fully subject to county proper taxes. If any section, clause, provision, or portion of this resolution shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, shall, such decision shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this resolution so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion. The Borough of Elephant, Lackawanna County, and the Mid Valley School District reserve the right to amend this resolution from time to time as it shall deem advisable in the best interest of the promotion of the purposes and intent of this resolution and the effective administration thereof. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman here to speak on that is Attorney Ryan Durkin and Sean Langen of the Langen Development Economics Group.
Just a quick announcement. I mean, we have the attorney and the developer here, but I think that we're running into some issues. It doesn't seem like they have audio, so I just called Brenda, and she's going to briefly speak on this.
Thank you, Tracy.
We've talked about this before, so we're, you know, we're aware. So thank you, Brenda, for filling in. But I really don't believe it's too much that we aren't well aware of all three commissioners. So thank you, though. Go ahead, Brenda.
This project is, again, a project that we feel is, you know, fits what our economic development tools kit has to offer. And, you know, we're very happy that Langen has decided to invest within Lackawanna County. This project is a million-square-foot warehouse, distribution, manufacturing facility within Elephant Borough. The Elephant Borough and Mid Valley have already cast resolutions and ordinances approving this LERTA, and the county typically will follow suit. Also, in addition, this project seeks to bring 250 to 400 high-paying jobs to the Borough of Elephant. Entry-level opportunities, operational and management, and wages can range from $18 to $55 an hour and salary positions from $45 to $150,000. So from our standpoint, again, we're following suit with the municipality and the school district, and we think that it's a great investment in our county.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all for doing this in Lackawanna County. We really appreciate it. Resolution 200247.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ratifying agreement with the Marine Corps. It be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby ratify the agreement with the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Foundation and does hereby provide $100,000 to be utilized by December 30 of 2020 to benefit the children in Lackawanna County. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman here to speak on that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
This resolution is ratifying an agreement with the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Foundation in the amount of $100,000. Countless families across the county are isolated at home, many without jobs and income, and are in dire need of support. In these unprecedented times, we're deeply concerned about COVID-19 and its devastating impact on our lives, our residents, and want to offer assistance now to help get these toys into the hands of families in need as soon as possible. COVID-19 has had a detrimental effect on all of our mental health and well-being. Toys, books, and games offer many benefits during the pandemic, helping to combat boredom, relieve anxiety in children, facilitate a return to normalcy, and even contribute to the educational development of children. I would like to thank you for contributing to such a wonderful impactful program. Your efforts will most certainly bring smiles to many children in Lackawanna County.
Thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Anyone have any questions?
No, that was a great, great thing, Brenda. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, great, great idea you had. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. All right, thanks, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Resolution 200248.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, authorizing and ratifying the filing of applications with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for various projects as detailed. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County, and whereas Lackawanna County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies as detailed. Number one, Lackawanna College, $65,179 for equipment purchase for laboratory teaching facility. Whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chairman of Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Account Grants. And now therefore be it resolved, this 16th day of December 2020, that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize and ratify the submission of these applications to the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Adopted at a meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director Sacco.
The LSA grant was due on November 30. Therefore, we needed a resolution to ratify the submission for this one additional agency that, that came in later on the actual due date. So in total, our county submitted 19 applications on behalf of various agencies totaling over $2.4 million in requests to the Commonwealth. The LSA grant program continues to provide support and enhance community and economic well-being for the communities and important projects across Lackawanna County. So thank you for your consideration in this.
This is the grant program that we share with the other counties that are touched by the casinos. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, it's Monroe County, and we share with the five contiguous counties.
Okay, so this is, this is not something that costs Lackawanna County any money at all?
No, it does not. We actually administer it on behalf of any of the, the grant recipients, which, you know, is definitely has made an impact on our communities because a lot of these projects are for smaller organizations that wouldn't have funding to do the good things that they do.
Great thing, okay, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Resolution 200249.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, authorizing the submission of an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby authorize the submission of an application in the amount of $278,936 for the Community Development Block Grant Non-Entitlement Municipalities in Lackawanna County on the federal fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program as administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. And be it resolved, the county proposes the following activities under the county's non-entitlement application. Lackawanna County for Non-Entitlement Municipalities, 2020 CDBG Fund Program Funds Non-Entitlement Allocation, $278,936. German Borough, ADA Borough Building Elevator, $228,728. Administration, $50,208. Be it resolved, the Board does also, does hereby authorize the submission of separate Community Development Block Grant applications on behalf of the following Community Development Entitlement Communities. Archibald Borough, Water and Sewer Administration, $123,588. Lakeley Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $119,162. Clark Summit Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $103,905. Dixon City Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $113,957. Dummore Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $198,113. Jessup Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $99,269. Old Forge Borough, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $137,591. Elephant Borough, Borough Building ADA Ramp, Single Unit Residential Rehab Administration, $104,274. Scott Township, Single Unit Residential Rehab and Administration, $101,682. Taylor Borough, Street Improvement and Administration, $115,991. TruPaul, Public Facilities Administration, $93,074. Be further resolved, Lackawanna County will comply with the terms of Pennsylvania Act 179 in connection with the above-mentioned grant programs serving the needs of low and moderate-income residents and eliminating slums and blighting influences. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman, once again, is Director Sacco.
This resolution is approving the submission of the FFY 2020 CDBG application on behalf of Lackawanna County to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $1,589,542. This is a standard requirement of the CDBG program, and we do this every year along with our application to the state. Any questions?
Questions for Brenda? No? Okay. Entertainer motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, all right, thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution 200251.
Appointments to the Workforce Developmental Board. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Workforce Development Board, all representing the business sector, with terms to commence January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2023. Ms. William Bott, owner of Billy Bott Custom Building Concrete and Tile LLC; Mr. William Boyle, Senior Vice President and Chief Credit Officer, The Dime Bank; Mrs. Sandy Fazula, owner of Garrity Supermarkets; Mr. John Pesavento, owner of Pesavento Monuments; Ms. Anna Rinaldi, HR Manager of Simona America. Be it resolved, further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Workforce Developmental Board, representing the business sector with the term to commence January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2023. Mr. George Swita, President and CEO of Swita Advertising. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. And once again, Director Sacco.
This resolution is reappointing five current board members and one new member, George Swita, from Swita Advertising to the Workforce Development Board. All of these board members contribute to the mandatory 51% business requirement and are all well-respected members of the community, have decision-making authority, and will provide invaluable expertise to the Lackawanna County business community. Any questions?
No. Okay. It, this is a board that we are very interested in. We've got to, you know, change and shape the force of our, the direction of our workforce so that we can attract new businesses into the, the community. That's, that's an important part of it, and this is a big step in the, you know, in that direction. And I'd like to thank Ms. Sacco for her hard work on this. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sacco? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye.
Brenda, before we let you go here, real quick, I just want to just ask you a real quick question. I know that you have your COVID expenditures update. We'll be ready for the Commissioners by the end of this week, or almost by the end of this week. There are persistent rumors out and about in the downtown Scranton area that we are taking, the Commissioners are taking COVID money from the $19 million and putting it into their 2021 budget to fill their gaps and to, to balance their 2021 budget. Could you please comment on that real quickly?
Yes, so that is most certainly not the case. Every project that our Commissioners have approved to move forward is absolutely in line with the guidelines of the County Relief Block Grant. There is no revenue replacement allowed. That is ineligible and most certainly cannot be used to balance a county's budget. And most certainly, that is not what is happening here, and it is not eligible. And if it were to happen anywhere, those monies would need to be repaid anyway, and it is most certainly not happening.
I appreciate that. I know, I'm not really big on rumors, but I just wanted the public to be aware. If they heard that, that is completely not true. Thank you.
It's not only not true, but Ms. Sacco has been extremely busy with what she's doing with the COVID relief money, how she distributes it. And that being said, you have to be cautious in how you do this and the timing. It needs to be spent by the end of the year, but you never knew what was going to come up in the, in, in the time. So it was something that had to be done carefully and logically and thoughtfully, and she's done a phenomenal job. And she's, as she's busy today on this Commissioners' meeting, she's been extremely busy in her, her everyday work. This is, this has been an adventure and a hard work for her and everyone involved. And I'd like to really thank Brenda for all the great things she's done with this, with this grant money. I mean, she's done a phenomenal job, and I don't know what we would conceivably do without her. Thank you, Brenda.
I agree, I agree, you know, and the last little bit that we've been doing the last couple of days, helping the local restaurants and bars. You know, Brenda was able to come up with an extra $1 million to disperse to 100 applicants, so that's phenomenal, and that's
It is, Chris, and the other part of it is, you know, you didn't know how much money you would have left depending on what the municipalities required and how they went forward and what they were doing. We, you know, it was new territory. And if something, you know, that may not be the last of it. We may be able to get some more money or allocate some more money in that direction before the end of the year, depending on how this shakes out. But, you know, again, it's not the end of the year yet. It's, so it's, it's interesting, and it's time-consuming. And again, Brenda, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And, and thank you very much to the Commissioners for allowing me to do my job and to find, you know, ways that we can be impactful. You know, as we went through this, we knew we were not giving a dollar back. We wanted to make sure that every dollar benefited the residents, the communities of Lackawanna County, and that it was impactful. So thank you for partnering with me to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Okay, again, Brenda, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good day.
You, too.
Bye.
Okay, resolution 200252.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is entering into an maintenance agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an equipment-maintenance agreement with Two Way Mobile Communications Incorporated on behalf of emergency services. One-year term to begin January 1, 2020, and to cost $48,071.11. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 16, 2020. Mr. Chairman here to speak on that is our 911 Director, Mr. David Hahn.
Good morning, everyone. This is a maintenance agreement between Two Way Communications of Lackawanna County to take care of our EZNet connection from Monroe County to Lackawanna County, from one of their tower sites to our tower site in Covington Township. It is a 24/7 response to our site in case there is an issue. This is, this is for a year, and it's, like I said, 24/7 response. This takes care of the EZNet system, which we are now connected to Monroe County to provide 911 service as of today. So that's, it's a very important contract that we have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hahn on this?
No, thank you for all the hard work, David.
Yep, you look like you're dressed for winter, Dave.
I am, ready, we're ready for it to come.
All right, on that note, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Yes.
Second.
On the question, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Dave. Resolution 200248. Resolution two zero zero two five three.
Entering into a Wilmac Maintenance Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a Wilmac Maintenance Agreement on behalf of Emergency Services for audio and texting record, text recording. Three-year agreement to commence immediately at the cost of seventy-five thousand dollars. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December sixteen, twenty twenty. Once again, Commissioners here is Director Hahn.
Uh, so, good morning again. Uh, I forgot to note in my last, uh, presentation there with Two Way. That was a, uh, we applied for a grant, and it, we got a grant for that, uh, maintenance contract. So that does not come out of the commie coffers at all. Uh, this quiz quote for Wilmac is a maintenance agreement for our nice, uh, what they call it, it's a nice, uh, uh, recording system, which records everything at the nine-one-one center via phone and/or radio transmission. It's a three-year contract costing twenty-five thousand a year. Um, and it's, that's down five thousand a year. We renegotiated. It used to be thirty thousand a year. We're down to twenty-five thousand a year, and it's a seventy-five thousand a year contract for a three-year term. Twenty-four hours, seven, uh, response. It's a maintenance contract. It includes unlimited breaks, fixed services, software assurance, and major, uh, major version upgrades, software patch, bug fixes, and minor, uh, version upgrades. Um, and it's called, it's called their gold package, so, uh, it'll take care of our recorder at all times for the next three years.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Hahn?
Nope.
Okay, entertainer motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, and good luck today, Dave, with the snow.
David, you want to give the, you want to give the commissioners a quick update on what we know about the snow tonight and tomorrow?
Absolutely. So, so as of the last, um, uh, contact we have with the National Weather Service, uh, we do have another, uh, conference call with them at eleven, uh, this morning. Um, we are, we are looking at a snowfall, uh, of starting between two and four PM this, this afternoon for Lackawanna County. Uh, it should start anywhere in between there, and it, they're saying that the onslaught of the storm should be very brutal in the beginning, dumping two to three inches an hour of snow on us in the very beginning. Um, we're expecting six to ten, ten inches, uh, during, uh, the evening hours. Uh, after midnight, we're looking at another, uh, six to eight inches, uh, for basically a total, uh, of what they're telling us is approximately, uh, twelve to eighteen inches in Lackawanna County with certain bands, uh, going to twenty inches or, or maybe even a little more. Uh, they don't know where the bands are yet. They, of course, there, there's something that they, they really have a hard time predicting, but there are certain bands that will be coming through Lackawanna County, which will dump, uh, probably, uh, larger, uh, larger amounts of snow, uh, in, in areas that everybody's, uh, you know, used to. Uh, the higher elevations and stuff will probably get a little bit more than, than, uh, than, of course, the cities. Uh, so, uh, we have, uh, had a meeting with, um, Pima. Uh, we've had a meeting with the, uh, National Guard, and we have, uh, we have some people on standby of the National Guard, although their response is going to be very limited due to COVID nineteen. Uh, we have requested, uh, three Humvee ambulances from the, uh, National Guard, uh, to be on standby for us, uh, but they will not respond until we need them. So, uh, we're gonna, of course, we have to wait for the storm to hit, and then, uh, if we do need them, we will request them out of a, um, Fort Indian Town Gap, and they will be stationed throughout Lackawanna County if we, uh, if we are able to get them at that point. So, the, the, the moral of the story is, we're in Northeast Pennsylvania. We're gonna get a large snowstorm. We're like, kind of twelve to eighteen inches minimum, uh, is what there is with the National, uh, Weather Service is telling us. It should end, uh, tomorrow morning when you wake up, you're gonna have twelve inches of snow in the ground. It should end by eleven AM tomorrow. The snowstorm.
I make getting to work tomorrow pretty interesting, weren't it?
Uh, yeah, once you dig out, it's gonna be interesting to get to work, yes, absolutely.
And the commissioners will have a, a press release about how the county is gonna function tomorrow later on in the day. We'll confer with David again and get something to the, the, the news media outlets.
Yeah, yeah.
And our employees, of course, our employees. That'll be in, in, in-house.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Motion two zero, two zero zero two five four.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a motion to award a used boom mower bid to Marshall Machine Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder at the cost of fifty-nine thousand dollars. Here to speak on this is our purchasing director, Mr. Joseph Wexler.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Joe.
Morning.
Uh, back in November, Lackawanna County solicited bids for a used boom mower. Uh, a boom mower is a type of equipment that's used to cut grass alongside our highways and in our larger, uh, fields within the park system. Uh, two bids were received, the lowest bid being fifty-nine thousand dollars, uh, from a company called Marshall Machinery. Uh, we're recommending that the purchase of this machine, uh, in the past, we have been, uh, leasing or renting machines, uh, during the summer, and this will alleviate the, the requirement to do that, and we'll have access to the machine as we need it.
Hey, thanks, Joe. Um, yeah, again, this, this should be cost-effective, and, and it should be, uh, work-effective. The, uh, they, they'll, we'll have it available at any time. We don't have to rent it, and, uh, it's, uh, a quality machine from a quality company, so we're, we're happy with it. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Wexler?
Nope, I don't.
I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve this motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board. And I'm sorry, you said you've got two, uh, two questions?
I do. The first email is from Danielle Butch. No home address. He said, "I am trying to comment on, to the Salary Board and Board of Commissioners concerning the Transportation Planning Manager salary of forty thousand dollars annually. Please consider reevaluating the salary for the Transportation Planning Manager position, factoring in the desired qualifications of a master's degree and two or more years of experience compared to Luzerne County's non-manager transportation planning position that ranges of twelve thousand dollars more to fifty-two thousand dollars annually. Realistically, this manager's role should start at fifty-seven thousand dollars. To bring it, to bring in the right person with the skills and experience that can lead Lackawanna County's transportation planning initiatives, this should be reevaluated. Additionally, the entire salary and benefits are reimbursable through PennDOT's transportation funding to the county via the MPO. I was a Transportation Planning Manager at Luzerne County and have a master's in planning with five years' experience currently working in Virginia." And then it goes on to further explain, um, their resume and skills and turnover in the position.
Oh, I, I think we can take this up with, um, Ms. Sacco and, uh, and, and talk about it further. Uh, but historically, a lot of positions in, in government are, don't pay particularly well, but we do want to attract more and better people. Uh, you're trying to balance, uh, uh, the amount we can afford and the, uh, the people that you're able to, uh, attract. But I think, uh, he, he makes a very good point, and we'll, we will consider, I will consider that, and we'll talk to Ms. Sacco, and I think the other commissioners would be open to that. Anyone have any? Chris?
Nope, we'll talk about it, sure.
All right, all right, and what else, Ms. Hart?
The final email I have is from Attorney Mary Walsh Dempsey from Upfburg and Associates, and it is in regards to the Lackawanna County Adopt an Angel Program. They say, "Dear Commissioners, I'm writing to commend the Lackawanna County's Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services on their annual Adopt an Angel Program, which provides presents to children in need who are either in the foster care system or outside of the foster care system, but in either case, to children who may not have experienced the magic of Christmas or any other holiday that they chose, they choose to celebrate. In particular, Sharon, Mary Kay, and Donna coordinated this amazing program once, again, once this year. This is not an easy task when one considers the number of children involved, which this year was over five hundred, the number of individuals who commit to provide gifts, and the overall time that it takes to organize, arrange, and finalize the program. When I dropped off presents at the Kaiser Valley Community Center on a Saturday, it was bustling with volunteers, both young and old, assisting in getting presents in and out of cars, as well as wrapping, in anticipation of the upcoming holiday. There was a spirit of joy and cheer in the air. I am sure that the volunteers at the community center were there on their scheduled days off of work, many with their own children in tow, giving back to others and making sure that someone else's holiday was brighter. I also note that all of the appropriate COVID nineteen precautions were being followed as well. I know that the Office of Youth and Family Services deal with many difficult and complex issues each day, and that the employees certainly deserve to be commended for their daily work as well. But the Adopt an Angel Program and the compassion, efficiency, and generosity with which it was orchestrated should also be recognized and applauded. On behalf of the community and especially the children and families for whom this program made Christmas possible this year, I say thank you. And to the volunteers who coordinate, run, and staff this program, they are indeed angels as well."
Thank you, and thank, uh, thank Ms. Dempsey for, uh, bringing that to our attention. But, and, uh, we'll, we'll move on to Commissioners of the Business. I think Commissioner Dominic has a, a comment on that particular program.
Yes, um, as a mother and just as a human being, I think these, I find it very sad to know that there are children that are gonna wake up and not have any gifts or, um, will have less than, um, their classmates and their friends because of economic circumstances, so I'm honored to speak on this. Um, the Adopt an Angel Program, every day we see the headlines reporting the human losses due to COVID nineteen. Occasionally, we see a story about individual acts of kindness during this tragedy. However, in Lackawanna County, an entire community came together to ensure the neediest in the county will have a break from their daily want during the holiday season. For over twenty-five years, the Office of Youth and Family Services has had an initiative called the Adopt an Angel Program, where individuals, families, or businesses adopt a child, which we call the angel, to ensure their Santa list is fulfilled. While many children request the latest toy, others ask for things that we take for granted, such as warm blankets, a small gift for their mom, or Chromebooks so that they can be educated in real time. This year, when many people have the least compared to previous years, they have given the most to the children who have far less. All previous records for giving have been broken. Nearly five hundred and fifty gifts were received from businesses and individuals. Businesses donated over twenty thousand dollars for the purchase of gifts for children to complete their Santa lists. We would like to extend our heartfelt thanks to all of those in the community who gave hope to those with the greatest need during the darkness of twenty twenty, and it does show that Lackawanna County residents truly, truly embody the spirit of this holiday season.
Thank you. That was very, and it's, uh, it's a tough time of year for a lot of people, and it's, it's, uh, it's something. Uh, Commissioners of the Business, Mr. Commissioner Schirmack.
Yeah, so they are tough times. And even back early in the, in the fall, back in September, um, I went to an event over at Naog Park for the Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative, and I met with, um, Kathy Wallace. And she asked me if I would help, she's been trying to do for many years, help Lackawanna County create a, a suicide prevention alliance or department. So I said I would definitely look into it. I would help out. So with the help of our Marion Colbert here at, at the Behavioral Health Department, you know, we, we got together, we met with, uh, other people, uh, Marie Anikovich, uh, Mike Nelson from Northeast Suicide, uh, Marie's from NAMI, uh, Tim Rollin, our Co- County Coroner. You know, we got together and, you know, the, Marion, she, she ran with it, and I'm gonna have her speak and tell you a little bit more about it. Um, but we were able to put together the Lackawanna County Suicide, uh, Prevention Alliance. And, um, we had a, a launch meeting last week. We had lots of people from all different departments. But Marion Colbert really, she, she really helped put this together, and I'll let her speak now. I think she's on.
I am. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, this, uh, Commissioner Schirmack approached me, as he said, and asked if I would help, uh, him and the Northeast Suicide Prevention Initiative begin a suicide prevention alliance in Lackawanna County. It's, um, truly my privilege to be a part of this endeavor. Uh, we had, uh, over forty people attend our meeting to launch this new alliance, uh, to prevent suicide and to give hope and help to Lackawanna County residents. We met on, uh, December eighth, Tuesday, December eighth, at the, uh, emergency, the nine-one-one emergency management building in Lackawanna County, and, uh, we, uh, had wonderful attendance from the community, from, um, uh, stakeholders in the community, from lost survivors, and, uh, many of our county human service departments, uh, our district attorney. So wonderful attendance. Um, suicide prevention is so important. One life lost to suicide is, is one too many. And, um, you know, as we heard this morning from other speakers, uh, there is a lot of, um, physical, emotional, and financial stress right now related to the pandemic. And even when, uh, even before the pandemic, certainly we know, um, as we heard from Commissioner Dominic, that there are families, um, who struggle all year long, um, even in the best of times when we're not dealing with COVID nineteen. So hopelessness and anxiety, stress and worry is something that we need to combat in our community. The Suicide Prevention Alliance will certainly do that through a variety of means. Um, one of the best things that we can do is just to get information on resources out to the community, and, uh, certainly the alliance will do that. Um, so we'll begin an education campaign. You'll be seeing more about that in the upcoming months, um, hosting different, um, training events and speakers and, um, using media and other platforms to get out information on the numbers that people can call if they are feeling hopeless or helpless. And we know that some, most at-risk groups are young adults ages eighteen to twenty-four, elderly citizens ages sixty-five and older, because they are very isolated, especially right now, and veterans are also very at risk, and first responders, um, EMTs, firefighters, police officers. Uh, these are the groups that are very at risk, and, uh, we want to be sure that they know that help is available. So we've developed a Lackawanna County resource list, and we'll be getting that to the Commissioners for inclusion on the county website. And we want to remind everyone that they can call the Suicide Prevention Lifeline if they are in, uh, under a lot of stress and are thinking about suicide. That number is one eight hundred two seven three talk, one eight hundred two seven three eight two five five. And there are certainly local lines, uh, as well. Our Lackawanna County Local Crisis Line is through the Scranton Counseling Center at five seven zero three four eight sixty-one hundred, or eight four four three four eight sixty-one hundred. And I'm, I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any questions about the newly formed Suicide Prevention Alliance.
I, I just think it's a great idea, Marion. I, 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 you know.
It's a great, it's a great, it's a great, it's a great job, Marion, and, uh, we really appreciate it, and it's something that we're, we're certainly gonna continue working on. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. That was, it was a lot of work, and, and she really brought everyone together. And in our meeting was not forty people in one room, just so people know. We had Zoom as well, so. And we will continue that, and I'm sure this is gonna grow, and, um, everybody's, everybody's welcome. But, uh, thank you very, very much. It was, it was great.
Good, good. Anyone have anything else?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to the, um, the, the gifts for the, for, for kids. Um, there are still time, and there are plenty of businesses that still have trees and things of that nature up. Uh, Jennifer's Hair Studio, uh, in Peckville on Main Street has a tree. They adopted five families, and there are members of each family and what they want. All you have to do is to pick an ornament from the tree. It tells you what they want, and then you bring it back wrapped with the original tag on it. So I just encourage everybody to get out there, and if you, if you can't, or you don't want to shop, just make a monetary donation so that at the end, if they don't have everything covered, they can take the money that was donated and go and buy kids presents, because no kid should wake up without gifts under the tree. That's it.
Thank you.
Well, I, I, I agree, and to support our local businesses, would they, they need our help, and the restaurants and bars, whatever we can do. But have a safe and a happy New Year.
Thank you.
Marion, thank you so much for everything you've done so far this year. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
No, my privilege to do it. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas. Everyone be safe with the snowstorm, and, uh, try to help out anyone you can as best you can until this is over. until this is over, and have a happy holiday.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick, I just want to say a couple, couple of things that to the public, references that, you know, this is our last Commissioners meeting of the year, and, you know, the public sees, all of us, since really April, on these virtual screens, we all look at each other with masks on every day. They don't see us with our masks on on these on these things. But I think the public and everyone that's involved here needs to know that while they see the Commissioners and Solicitors and Mr. DeBilio and myself and Tracy on this thing twice a month, our directors and our employees really have done a great, great job in two thousand and twenty. I mean, they had, they have been hit with, obviously, a pandemic that the likes that we have not seen in over a hundred years, and they have come through. That's Mr. DeBilio's employees, the Row Office's employees, the Commissioners' employees, the courts, and everyone else. We see certain directors come on for these 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 meetings twice a month, and they're always doing something good for the community. What they don't see are are people like in the roads and bridges and the I T departments that kept the place flowing, all the employees in the I D I T department, and many, many other departments, the purchasing, the economic development, the arts and cultural, and I could go on and on and on about all everything, but I want everyone to know that the Commissioners, who will be mad at me in a second, but, you know, you had two freshman Commissioners coming through the door here and 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 working with, you know, an experienced Commissioner with four years under his belt, have allowed their directors and employees to work diligently for the services in this county, and they really have. And the employees and the directors have done a great job through really strenuous, a really strenuous year. And I want to tell the Commissioners myself that I appreciate them for everything that they've done in allowing us to work as hard as we possibly can to get the job done for our citizens, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, I I agree with you, Brian. Everybody really stepped up, and I appreciate it. Coming in new, this was, like I've said a lot, many times, none of this stuff was in the brochure when I was signing it.
Was not.
Well said, Brian.
Yeah, there's no
Everybody did a great job.
There's there's no, there's no instruction manual for this job. Okay, on that note, thank everyone, Merry Christmas, yeah, and everyone be safe for the
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. Entertainer motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, on the question, all in favor?